I am going to call this meeting to order. And honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council here on Tuesday, May 13th, at 6:00 PM, City Council Chamber, Building 1, Second Floor, at 20401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to allow City Council to consider adoption of the fiscal 2025-26 Resource Management Plan, operating budget, capital improvement budget, and related ordinances as listed in the public agenda. If you wish to make comments virtually, please follow the two-step process by WebEx or register with the City Clerk. The formal session will be broadcast on cable TV. At this point, could we have a roll call, please?
All present.
Okay. At this point, before we go into the budget, I understand we have speakers?
Yes, Your Honor, we have three. The first speaker is Shannon Kelly. After Ms. Kelly is Holly Martier.
There you go. Welcome. Yeah, right there.
Good evening, Members of the Council. My name is Shannon Kelly. I'm very proud to be here tonight representing the Virginia Symphony Orchestra. I serve as the Vice President right now for the Symphony, and I want to come in person on behalf of the Musicians Board and Staff of the Symphony to thank the Council for the work that you've put in to increase the Symphony's regional grant this season for fiscal year '26. The impact of this additional funding will go back tenfold to the citizens of Virginia Beach. We look forward to continuing to provide services and education that reach over 5,000 students, approximately 5,000 students every year in Virginia Beach, as well as outstanding mainstage concerts at the Sandler Center and at Regent University. I truly hope that we will continue to deepen our partnership, and I just want to express our gratitude to the Council for your commitment. And finally, I'm happy to share that we will be securing administrative office space in Virginia Beach starting next season, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Holly Martier. And then we have one WebEx speaker.
Good evening.
I am surprised that there's more people here for the budget. I am just really shocked. Anyway, I appreciate your time, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm just overcharging with the fees and then wanting to raise taxes. That's going to kill me financially. I don't know if you want me foreclosed out of my house. I cannot afford the taxes. I cannot afford— I could barely afford my mortgage as it is, and it's really not that much, but it's still a lot for me because I'm considered part-time. I've been working full-time hours, but it's probably about to go back to part-time, unfortunately. You raise my taxes, you lose my vote. Nice and easy said. I'm just sick of being robbed and you robbing the citizens of Virginia Beach. I have friends that live in Chesapeake. They won't even move to Virginia Beach, nor friends in Hampton. They won't come to Virginia Beach. They'll come to Virginia Beach to hang out with me, but they will not move here because it's crooked. To me, the taxes going up again, it's ridiculous. We don't need that. Whoever wants to raise the taxes will not get my vote, and I'll go through Virginia Beach and tell everybody, "Do not vote for these people who voted yes." If you want to pay my taxes, that's fine, but I don't have it. I think it's disgraceful and it's embarrassing to Virginia Beach and Virginia for raising it so much. I don't have the money for it. Like I said, I can't even get my friends from Chesapeake, Hampton, wherever, Norfolk, they won't move to Virginia Beach because they said it's crooked and taxes are going up, and I let them know. I said, "Yeah, they're trying to do all this." So they won't move here. I just don't think it's fair to the citizens of Virginia Beach to raise it so much. I just—I don't have the money, and I don't want to be foreclosed on my house because I can't pay taxes. I have the money in my dreams, but I just don't have it physically. And for the taxes going up, that's despicable. It really is. And it's like karma happens to everybody. I've gotten bad karma. I married the wrong person. I got stuck. But I just can't take it anymore. I just can't take—you know? And I was talking to my son. Thank God he helps me when he's home, but when he goes back to college, I'm not going to make him give me any money because he's not in the house. But I just don't think it's right to charge so much on taxes. So if anybody wants to raise the taxes, lose my vote, and you could pay it for me because I really just don't have it. It's not like I'm a millionaire and trying to get away with anything. I just don't have it, and I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Virginia Beach as well. I'm speaking for whoever's not here tonight because they don't want taxes raised either. I found this out because somebody texted me about this tonight, and I'm like, "Thank God I found out." But this needs to stop.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
We have one WebEx speaker, Robert Dean. He's not on. And Mayor, I did receive an email from Mr. Dean just a few moments ago asking about the link, and I let him know there were just a few speakers, so he's not on yet, though. So that's all the speakers.
Okay. At this point, we'll ask Vice Mayor Wilson to go over and make the items and make a motion.
Before I do, may I make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
If this budget was to have a theme, it would be for public safety. And we've got a lot of things in this budget that shows our dedication to public safety, the people who take care of us every day and run into danger to save us. There's 30 new firefighters in this budget. We had 30 last year. Our market salary survey showed that we were underpaying our public safety, so there's a substantial pay raise for all of our public safety folks. The fire department's getting their apparatus gone from $2 million to $10 million. The meal tax is going to be dedicated to public safety, so we're going to be able to get ALITA because we need ALITA. And there's a lot of other really, really great things in this budget that I think everybody has worked hard on. Everybody has added something to it in some way, form, or other. So if I can just read the motion, please. Under the operating budget, number one is ordinance to appropriate $3,864,748,322 consisting of $753,894,590 in inter-fund transfers, $325,165,903 for internal service funds, and $2,785,687,829 in operations for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. Number two is the ordinance to establish the tax levy on real estate for FY 2026. Number three is the ordinance to establish the tax levy on personal property and machinery and tools for calendar year 2026. Number four is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to submit the FY 2025-26 Annual Funding Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number five is the ordinance to amend City Council City Code Sections 35 through 64 and 35 to 67, rate exemption or deferral of real estate taxes for elderly or disabled persons. Number six is the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 35-137, void tax on meals. Number seven is the ordinance to establish revenues for and planned expenditures from the Major Projects Fund. Number eight is the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 32.5-2 for equivalent residential unit fee. Number nine is the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 2-385, rate short-term rental zoning permit. Number 10 is the resolution to extend the city school revenue sharing policy to June 10th, 30th, 2026. The 11 is the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 2-83, rate holidays. Number 12 is the ordinance to add City Code Section 2-426, rate charging for ambulance services. Number 13 is the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 2-421, rate Department of Emergency Medical Services. Number 14 is the ordinance to add City Code Sections 2-322, rate the established Division of Community Justice within the Department of Human Services. Number 15 is the ordinance to declare a surplus of $1 million of funding within the Central Business District's South Tax Increment Financing Fund, Town Center TIF, rate the 2024-25 operating budget. Number 16 is the ordinance to amend Section 3 of the Central Business District's South Tax Increment Financing Ordinance, rate to include capital maintenance and beautification. Number 17 is the ordinance to add Article 4 to City Code Chapter 18, rate the pleasure boat license fees. Number 18 is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 2-101, rate definition of full-time employee. B is the 2025-26 capital budget. Number 1 is the ordinance to adopt the FY 2025-26 through FY 2030-31 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and appropriate $446,881,310, rate the FY 25-26 capital budget, subject to funds being provided from various sources set forth herein. Number 7 is the ordinance to authorize the issuance of general obligation public improvement bonds in the maximum amount of $72,827,365, rate various public facilities and general improvements. Number 3 is the ordinance to authorize the issuance of general obligation public improvement bonds in the maximum amount of $11,800,000, rate flood protection. Number 4 is the ordinance to authorize the issuance of stormwater utility system revenue bonds in the maximum amount of $12,369,281. Number 5 is the ordinance to authorize the issuance of water and sewer system revenue bonds in the maximum amount of $26,819,000. Number 6 is a resolution to affirm the city's commitment to fund the locality share of projects and provide signature authority for projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT. Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Comments? Ms. Hammond?
I do have comments, and I apologize for having so many comments, but I've spent a tremendous amount of time on this budget. It's certainly a budget that addresses a lot of issues and addresses a lot of them very well, but some of them I would like to maybe make some suggestions about. And I sent an email this morning, which I think most of you probably didn't have a chance to read, so I've asked that you have a copy of it now if you would like to see what I'm going to comment on. And all of these things that I'm going to mention, it's just three issues that I'm addressing here, but I've addressed them all in our workshops and in my reconciliation letter to the Vice Mayor, so I'm not bringing something up at the last minute. Item 6, and that's item 6 in the reconciliation letter, not in these ordinances, addresses the ITA Athletic Village and Preservation Area Plan, and in the budget, it's to be allocated $200,000. And as I've been saying from the first time I saw this, I don't want to see us spend $200,000 just on an economic impact study. Last November 12th, we had a briefing on the ITA plan update, which I had asked for in last year's budget and received October 1st, just as I asked. But in that ITA plan, the short-term, low-cost, as the mayor called it then, low-hanging fruit, included four items, and I would like for us not to wait, as this says, to have further direction from the City Council before beginning such a study. I just want it to be addressed here, so you know what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for any more money, but I want that $200,000 to be used to move forward with all four of the items that were mentioned in that low-cost, short-term element. And it says, as I say here, "This $200,000 should be used to move forward with designing and activating the 5K practice course and temporary cross-country trails at Atlantic Village East, as well as studying the economic feasibility of all sports and ecotourism aspects of the master plan. The fourth initiative, planting trees in the fringes of Athletic Village West, where they will not conflict with future development, should also begin with funding allocated from the existing tree mitigation fund." So this is what I would like to have as a direction for this $200,000, not just this open-ended $200,000 that the City Council is going to address later. So if it is okay, that's one of the things that I would like to add to the budget. Okay, I'll go on to my other two items. An issue that we heard from several speakers—if I counted right, there were 12 at our public hearings, and then we've gotten quite a few responses in the Speak Up Virginia Beach exercise that address the libraries and the elimination of these five library positions. I really think this deserves further investigation. We haven't mentioned it anywhere in the budget that we have here, or even in the reconciliation letter. We sort of ignored the fact that we've got an issue in our libraries, as I think Councilwoman Ross Hammond said last week, a pretty low morale among our folks there. And it's because we are—according to this budget, we would eliminate four of the branch services coordinator positions. And from everything I've been able to learn, they do have a very important connection with the public, and I don't think they're the positions that we should be eliminating. I would hope we can find enough money somewhere that we don't have to eliminate any positions in the libraries, but if we do have to eliminate some positions, it should not be these four. I think we're only eliminating 14 positions citywide and five of them in the library. That's not our libraries. We don't do that to our folks, and we certainly don't just tell them we'll give them a severance package if they can't find another job with the city. That's not the way we treat our people and our employees. Maybe other levels of government do, but Virginia Beach never has, and I don't want to see us starting it now, and I couldn't do this. All nine branch services coordinator positions should be retained, and any necessary staff reductions should be from positions that are not involved in customer service. And as I say, this could be a direction that we add in this budget to further ensure that customer services are not disruptive. Any plans for changes in management at branch libraries should be revised so that in no single year will both the manager and the services coordinator positions from any branch library location both experience reassignment or turnover. And if that direction could be added somewhere in the budget so that if we're going to be eliminating positions in the library, it's not these positions. I feel very strongly about that, and I think if you had a chance to read the things that came to us in Speak Up Virginia Beach, it was pretty strongly conveyed to us by a number of people that these positions are very important and should not be eliminated. So that will be my second request for an adjustment to the budget. Then we get to the meal tax. As I read this ordinance here, the reason for the meal tax increase is to fund this major projects fund. Now, it seems to me that in our retreat, our policy was going to be we weren't going to start up new projects. We're just going to manage what we've got, and we are not going to overpromise the public. Well, when you look at this ordinance to establish revenues for and planned expenditures from the Major Projects Fund, it says, "Whereas this operating budget appropriation ordinance establishes a major project fund to provide a sustainable means of funding to certain projects and obligations, to include, among others, the Virginia Beach Trail, the Law Enforcement Training Academy, the Indian River Road Safety Improvements, and the Critical Court Facility Safety and ADA Accessibility." All good projects, no doubt about it, but the only one that's going to really go forward at this time is the trail. The other three are only going to be being designed. They're not going to be constructed for a long time, and each of those is going to wind up being well over $100 million, possibly closer to $200 million. So to raise the meal tax at this time to fund—or to begin funding design of these projects just seems questionable to me. At the very least—and as I'm reading here and as I said last week—I would like for us to postpone the effective date and possibly the adoption of this tax increase for six months so that we will not begin the increase July 1st, the middle of the tourist season. The increase will bring Virginia Beach to a 12% meal tax rate, which I understand is one of the highest in the nation. Deferring will also allow us to better know the situation of the national economy. The time of such uncertainty as we have now is hardly the time to expand spending and taxing. We should be in a belt-tightening mode, as our governor has indicated, for our state's budget due to these short-term economic risks. I also question the wisdom of making the new meal tax a dedicated funding source for public safety, which is our top priority. Our number-one priority should not have to depend on the performance of a variable funding source, but should have our first dollars as the allocation. I think we need to do a lot more discussion of imposing a higher meal tax before we take action, and if we either just don't take action on it at this time and say we're going to deal with it later in this year and adopt something to take effect January 1st, if we're going to do it, I think we would be in a much better position. As I read this ordinance—to establish revenues for and planned expenditures from the major projects—it says, "Whereas the projects providing public safety enhancement—the public safety projects—and D above require the City Council to create new revenue in the form of increased meal taxes and dedicate future revenues." So this says that we're having to increase this meal tax because of this major projects fund, which I question to start with. This major projects fund will be funded with 0.77% of a restaurant meal tax dedication. That is the new 0.5%, plus it's taking away 0.27% of the meal tax, which has been going to open space. Open space is only going to have 0.17% of meal tax. I think we've got at that program. So this major projects fund will be generated by—we'll get this 0.77% of the restaurant meal tax. And we'll get 0.3 cents from the 9.9 cents that ARP now gets. So it's taking money from that, plus the revenue generated by a transfer of 40% of the Town Center TIF revenues. And I just have a question because I thought TIF revenues by law had to be spent within the boundaries of the TIF unless it's been declared a surplus. And I don't see either one of these four, except maybe the trail, and it's not going to that, being in the Town Center TIF. So I guess my question is, is this other ordinance that we have about declaring 1 million of funding within the Central Business District's South Tax Increment Financing Fund a surplus within this district? Are we declaring that surplus so that we can use that surplus for this major projects fund? And is it a one-time thing, or what are we going to do other years if this 40% from the TIF fund is a one-time thing? What are we going to do going forward?
Mr. Harmer will come up and address that question. If that's all right.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council. The declaration of surplus that is in the published budget is a one-time surplus. That is to supplement the money that is in the SSD, as the SSD is currently trending downward, and if this $1 million is infused into the SSD, it is possible that this City Council in the next budget would have to increase the SSD rate, which the City Council may want to do or may not, but in essence buys some time to do further analysis of the Town Center SSD. That's the 1 million. The 40% dedicated to Major Projects Fund, that is something the City Council has the discretion to do because the City Council never issued TIF bonds. If the City Council had issued TIF bonds, it would limit the ability of the City Council to move money into, out of, that TIF fund because of the promises made to the bondholders, which are codified in state law. And so because the City Council has not issued TIF bonds, you have the ability, subject to appropriation of the City Council, which is your discretion in any budget year, to move that money elsewhere. And so the 40% to Major Projects Fund is a—this fiscal year, subject to next fiscal year, the City Council could change its mind. But if the City Council doesn't, then that 40% year-over-year would continue to be dedicated to the Major Projects Fund.
Well, I guess I read something wrong, and I've read so much I can't remember where I read what, but I thought I read in the law for a TIF, in establishing a TIF, was that the monies raised in a TIF have to be spent within the boundaries of the TIF. What I read didn't mention that they had to be bonds. So can we take money from the Town Center TIF and put it in other places in the city?
So again, those restrictions apply when the city has issued obligations, and obligations in that piece of the state code refer to TIF bonds or other development-agreement-type obligations of an amount certain. This City Council has not done that to themselves, so the City Council has retained the discretion to use that money elsewhere. And so to your question, could the City Council take money from the TIF and put it somewhere else? It absolutely could.
Well, that doesn't sound right to me, but anyway, I guess that's a one-time thing here. So every year now, to fund this major projects fund, we're going to have to have money from someplace other than the meal tax and the ARP money.
The City Council's decision to dedicate funds is always subject to the proviso that the City Council can change its mind later. You're not binding a future council's hands as far as what they want to do with that funds, and so unless and until the City Council by ordinance changes the dedication, it will continue to be in place until it changes.
Well, I can just tell you, I have so many questions about this major projects fund and the meal tax that I'm just not ready to vote to approve this tonight, and it would be more reason why I would want to defer this action for six months, and we can say we can revisit the meal tax, and if we decide we're going to put in the meal tax, it can take effect January 1st, then it won't be in the middle of our tourist season. And can you imagine the burden we are placing on our waitstaff at these restaurants who are going to have to hand these people their bill that shows a 12% meal tax and what kind of pushback they're going to get? These people have to collect this tax for us, and I think we're putting a lot of burden on our small businesses who may not do well this summer. We don't know what's going to happen with this economy, and I don't think we're going to have as many Canadian visitors as we usually do. I just don't think this is the time for us to increase this tax, and I think it could very well underperform, and it's going to put a burden in places that I'm not comfortable in putting it. So I'm just not ready to vote for this part of the budget tonight. So my request would be that we delay this part and gives us time to look at these projects, to see if there are other means of funding them, if in fact we do decide this is what we want to go forward to. But when I look at these Law Enforcement Training Academy, Indian River Road Safety Improvements, and I'm sure asked for that, and this Critical Court Facility Safety and ADA, all we're doing is designing them. We're not building them for many, many years, and they're going to cost a heck of a lot more than this is going to produce. So I think we need to be sure that this is what we're going to do before we take this action because raising the meal tax is a pretty—to me—is a pretty substantial action. So those three adjustments I would like to make if anybody thinks they might want to second them. to second them for me.
Any second at all? Okay, anybody else would like to speak? How about we go ahead and open the vote then to approve the recommendations as read by the Vice Mayor?
As much as I hate to do it, I'm going to have to vote against the budget.
The vote is open. Councilmember Remick, Rouse, and Schulman.
Okay, Jennifer, would you like to say something? I'm sorry.
Yes, before the vote, I need to disclose that I work for TCC, and that disclosure letter is on file with the clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the operating and CIP budgets.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all very much. I know it was a challenging process, and we appreciate everybody's working on it. We are adjourned.